The meeting is now in session. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so Tara, roll call please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Rain?
Here.
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Bocky?
Here.
Councilmember Prangle?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Alright, everyone's present, we will continue on. And let's see, the first thing, we have multiple presentations tonight, as I see quite a few people in the audience. So, I'm gonna do presentations first, and then Delbert, I know if you want public comment, that'll be afterwards, so, okay? So we're gonna start with public presentations, I'm gonna start over here. Jerry, I know that you're here tonight, are you here?
We're gonna hold off for executive session.
Okay, Jerry, you're gonna hold off until executive session. Gentlemen, behind you, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Matt Cameron.
Cameron, how old are you?
Okay.
Lou Bartiger.
Are you guys all together?
All together.
Alright, so outside of the room, and then we're right here, so AdCap correct?
Yes.
Alright, come on forward Lisa and Chief-
Well, Nick Johnson, our mobility manager, just wanna speak to you guys about the walk audit.
Okay, fabulous, so come forward, I know we're excited to hear about this, we've been talking about the sidewalks for awhile, so welcome Nick and Lisa, thank you. So podium is yours.
I'm gonna hand out these to you, so you can look at it. First of all, I'm Nick Johnson, I'm Department Mobility Manager. We're jointly hosted by AdCap and funded by ODOT. And first of all, the Walk Audit is a program we've been working on for quite awhile now. I know Adams County has already had one done before, but basically what it is, is we document and collect data on all the sidewalks in all of Brown County. Georgetown is a good place for me to start, because I was born and raised here, so I'm familiar with all the places that don't have sidewalks or have an issue. And the purpose of it is that we can take that data and gather it and give it to funding sources and get grants and things like that. So onto the second page here where I, this is usually the spiel I give to volunteers to get them active in it. Basically, walking the streets is what we do for it. We, what we're trying to do here is get a big group of people together, and then we'll print out a bunch of papers for them, and then we have like a bunch of questions on it too, they can answer them, document any issues they see, and fill it out as we wander through like, we would pick a street and we walk down it, and then we just document everything we see, so that we can take it back to OBRDC, Ohio Valley Regional Development Committee. And Jacob Taylor, who works there, puts together what's called an Active Transportation Plan, which is a, all of that data gathered together, and then he'll take it back to engineers' offices, anybody who works on sidewalks, things like that, and tells them the specific areas that need work or adjustment. And then we can take that data and give it to the FDA or ODOT and try and get a grant. It's good for community engagement as well, for all the citizens to get together with officials such as yourselves, and really build a community, and work together to get something done, and form some civic pride in seeing these things actually take root and affect the community. So the big part of it is getting the sidewalks fixed, so we need funding for that and planning for that. One of the terms we like to use is shovel-ready, which means having everything completely prepared before we even turn in the grant, apply for it, or anything like that, which is what the Active Transportation Plan is for. So once we have all of that together, we can just send them that, and they can determine if they're eligible or not. One of the things actually that happened last month, Governor DeWine started a program called the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is giving fifty-two million dollars to forty-four counties, no, forty-four projects in thirty-three counties in Ohio. And Peoples at Adams County has actually already gotten some of that, because Adams County has the ATP already, Active Transportation Plan. So that's what we're trying to start in Brown County, because we don't have one here. There's actually a split that we've seen in transportation funding, that like, I think it's seventy or eighty percent goes to three counties in Ohio, which I'm sure most everybody can probably guess which three those are. And the other eighty-five kind of just have to fight over the last thirty, twenty percent. So we're trying, the Mike DeWine's program is going through for the next four years, so we're really trying to get these started now, so that we can finish the plan and have data to send, and then get the funding we need.
So, couple questions. So have you started on any of the street audits yet? So that's probably the first primary step, correct? Well, organizing volunteers and then street audits, correct?
Yes.
Have you started on street audits?
We haven't done a physical one yet, but I also have, the Mobility Manager Program has put together a forty-five minute video-
Okay.
-that lets people kind of self-regulate, do it themselves, they just follow this QR code, watch the video, it's very in-depth on how to do it exactly, so that if I'm not there, I can walk through it with them. So, and then we fill out, there's like a big poll thing, kind of like a survey at the end, so they fill that out, we get that data, sends it directly to us, and we can just consolidate all that and then send it.
Interesting, so, so first step then, you're probably wanting volunteers to help, right? When you held that QR code up, is that for just to watch the video on how-to, or is that also to sign up and do the assessment yourself? Like me saying, say if I'm bored one day and I just wanna do an audit of a street, can I go scan a QR code and watch the video and do the assessment for you?
Yep, it'll take you to the Google document, as well as the video, so you can watch the video and then know what you have to do to-
And then go do it?
Yep.
So, they need volunteers, guys?
Yes.
Elected officials make great volunteers, just so you know. That's what you need, right? Volunteers, but not just elected officials.
More the better, so that's why we're doing the digital version and trying to get together.
So if somebody didn't have access to scan a QR code, how did they get, how did they come along and start doing surveys?
Well, we've been handing them out at events and trying to get that started as well, because I go to a lot of events, I have a booth, health fairs, things like that, and just try and talk to people about it, hand out the physical copy of the survey that I have, and anything that is available to me, I'm trying to do.
Can they call you?
Yeah.
So they would call you at?
Nine three seven, three seven eight, sixty forty-one.
It's AdCap, right?
Yeah.
Adam is brown, yes, okay.
Three eight one, three ten, yes I do, actually.
Questions from everyone up here. Kellyanne, you've been pretty active in the sidewalk discussion in Georgetown, thoughts, ideas?
Yeah, how many grants have you been able to be a part of, do you get? For us specifically, we don't, do you fancy one?
So basically what it is, is we help with the walk audit and compile the information, but you, as the village, would need to apply whatever you need.
Yes.
But we're gonna give you the data to put in your grant application, based on the walk audit information.
And then would all of the, so in the walk audit, would that be all of the streets are audited before it's ready to go for a grant, or does that matter?
I don't think every street in town has to be audited, am I correct?
Yeah, it's just really a numbers game, we just need as many people doing as many streets as possible, and the most problematic streets as well, so.
I mean, it's like any other grant, the more information you have, the more detailed you can be, the better your chance of getting funded is going to be.
What's the timeline, like what do you suggest this needs to be finished by?
Well, I've been trying to do one a month, do we need a specific date? It's kind of ongoing.
Yeah, they'll be ongoing, the grant that we're working on right now, our next position to be able to do the walk audits, will be from, it started fiscal year July first, and it'll run until June thirtieth of next year, so, but, we try, we want to start doing these and get them in during nice weather, so we'd like to, what we'd like to see is a group of people together to go out with Nick, and pick an area and concentrate on that area, then do another one, and just keep moving along like that.
And then do you guys get a percentage once it's done, or what's the, just?
The purpose is just to help each village to get their sidewalks.
Some of the grants are by county as well, like the one I just mentioned, so.
So it's a county-wide project?
Yeah, all of Brown County is what I'm trying to do, so.
And with the vision of AdCap, it really makes sense that they would be kind of behind this, because they're, they provide the programs for some of the people in the community.
Are they generally a hundred percent funded, or do we have to kind of do a match on that, or do you know how that works?
I didn't see anything about a match for the one that I looked up, so I don't think so.
Do you think you could research that and get back to-
I can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
I just looked into it more, yeah.
The form that you're talking about, the volunteers use, is that something that they find on the website, or is that?
On my website, yeah, which is on that card that I gave them. We have it on there, as well as our Facebook, if anybody's on that.
Are they able to come if they want to and get a hard copy, actually at the AdCap building, if you need to, if you just maybe not have access to internet or whatever?
Yep, if I'm in, I can print off as many as somebody needs.
Alright, and probably Travis is a good contact-
Yeah, I'll reach out to him.
-for the village, and yeah, I think the two of you having some more dialogue probably would make sense, and then we could probably get something more organized.
Once I have like data from Georgetown, I can consolidate all that and send it to anybody who wants it, so you can put it in a grant or whatever.
Sounds good.
Whatever you'd like to do with it.
Is each, is each town in Brown County individually, or is it a collection of the county?
It's kind of a collection of the county, but we do keep that data separate, there's an option that tells you, it'll ask what town you're in, what street, so we can keep it separate if we need to, but it'll be together.
But if, when the grant would become available, would one town have preference over another because they got their information in quicker?
That I'm also not a hundred percent sure, so I don't wanna like say anything about that.
So we can, we can take the data, though, and apply it on our own.
Oh, okay, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to wait forever in all the other towns?
No, 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 no.
Travis, in your experience, have you, do you come across, like, where you went over to see some grants or anything?
We haven't able to, I've used ODOT to fund sidewalk for new sidewalk construction, but I haven't for rehabilitation.
So, let's just use, you say you're from Georgetown, right?
Yeah.
So the street, terrible streets, but where the side entrance is to the fairgrounds. So you walked from Main Street to buy your ticket to get into the fair, just for example, if we were wanting to get a new sidewalk where one is not, is that something that would be applied that we can use this grant for?
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Alright, well Nick, awesome, we're so glad that you guys were able to join us tonight, and certainly appreciate the presentation. As I said, Travis is gonna be probably your primary contact to get something organized as a whole, but also don't be afraid to come back and just continue to talk about it too as well, because we stream live, and the more you talk about it, the more it gets out there.
It's true, yeah. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, so that concludes public comments, and we will go into, I'm sorry, not public comment, comment, that concludes presentations. We will go into public comment, which, Delbert, would you like to address the group?
Can you stop then?
Yeah, Nick. You're late. You might be a little late.
Remember, I got fifteen minutes off, so whatever.
I think there's an individual question from the crowd.
So how's that work when you walk the sidewalks with people? Do you make notes and say this is bad and that's good, and this has got a tree?
Yeah, I'll have a bunch of clipboards, pens, and we'll have the physical copy of it, and then there'll be, like, filling out like a questionnaire, that kind of thing, it's like, what sidewalk, did it, the sidewalk have a sidewalk period? Because that's-
Do you have a layout, you make marks on the layout, or?
We don't use a map, no, the other digital copy does, but we usually just have it lists, like, how many cracks you see, if you see any cracks, like the truncated domes for blind people, those orange things, if they're faced the right way, because sometimes they're not. It's just a big list of things, and like, an option at the end for filling in anything.
You done this for?
Yes.
So in other words, somebody walked with you, you could kind of tell them what they're looking for.
If there's something with the criteria while we're looking for, well.
And that's part of what Nick does, he'll go out with a group of people, an individual person, whatnot.
You're gonna be busy.
Well, thank you again, we appreciate you guys. Alright, Delbert, the podium is yours to address the group.
I'm gonna keep this fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
When I hear people griping about what the people in council do or don't do, they're not in here, does anybody watch this thing, these meetings, pay attention?
Yes.
Or am I talking to you guys?
No, there's a lot of people on it.
Okay, well, this ain't for you guys, but, you know, if you've ever done business, or if you've ever been on these councils like this, you don't make one phone call and get one thing done. You might make ten, and the people don't show up, and this, that, and the other, it's not that easy. And as far as picking people and hiring people and all that stuff, doing these sidewalks, you was talking about all the different new regulations, it's not that easy. So if they're not in here watching this meeting, or if they're not, they've never been on a business and had to do this, they don't know what you're talking about, they need to get in here and pay attention. I stopped and talked to Robbie Serratt, because I was going down that way, he's got, it's firewood, it's junk, you know, when a log's got a knot on it here and there, you can't do anything with it. And then I went up there to the park, and all the logs he's got stacked up there, there's no, there's no marketable timber. When you go to cut a log, let's say this is a log, when you square that thing up, there ain't much left, if the log's only this big, let alone if it's not the right grade. And right now, the only thing that's worth anything is walnut, sometimes white oak's okay, but most of the time, it's just walnut. So the thing with that is, I'm cutting a hundred and fifty, two hundred trees right now, and the biggest job is carrying the brush off. So he ain't making nothing carrying that brush off, he can't sell it, he can't burn it, so whatever he's do, if he's doing this for Evan Stevens, I'd say he's doing us a favor, because there ain't no money in it. And not only that, it's hot. So, anyway, people don't pay attention to these meetings, I mean, I come in here and I don't know a tenth of what's going on, I just hear bits and pieces, you know, but I can't really make a decision on what little bit I know, so you just need to really be in here, or somebody that's been in business, they would understand, they understand how that goes. That's it, I still got thirteen minutes left.
Thanks, Delbert. Alright, that concludes public comments, and we are gonna continue along. Travis, item six on the agenda is the department reports, and actually, I'm gonna start with my left with Chief Rocky.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. I just wanted to come in, I hadn't been here awhile, with just conflicts with my schedule and what have you, it's a little, a little past mid-year, but I wanted to give you guys just kind of a mid-year report, what's going on, what's new, we have a lot of stuff going on, and I just kind of wanted to highlight some of it, so, I'll try to make it quick, but we always start off with run volume, that's, that's the big thing. We're about two hundred runs above where we either were this time last year, so, you know, problem with firing a mess, it could either, you know, even increase, or it could go down, so I, you know, who knows where we'll end up the year at, but for right now, we're about two hundred runs above where we were last year. I don't know if everybody followed, but Travis and Kelly were there on June twenty-seventh, four guys from the department were given a life-saving award by Clima Mercy Hospital. I believe it was the president of the hospital came out, was it Kelly, but there were several nurses, and there was, there was a lot of several people there, but they responded to a call a few weeks prior to where the gentleman was pretty much lifeless, and they revived the gentleman, delivered him to the hospital alive, and he actually recovered. I don't know, it was a pure, I mean, they did great work, but it was almost a miracle that he survived, but they didn't want to come out and present the guys, because they did everything textbook, and they worked falsely to save the man, and he's out walking around because of it, so. And that was Clayton Van, Kyle Cornett, Chase Porter, and Nathan Hardymore, the four on the run, so, kudos to those fellows, so. Most of you know, you appropriated some money in a meeting here not long ago from the new to us used ambulance we bought, I drove up to New York, picked it up, it's a 2019 Braun ambulance, it's not in service yet, it's getting some things done to it to get it in service, hopefully it'll be in service next week, but, so we're happy about that, you've seen the old Redmond sitting outside, we're gonna get, sell it to somebody for boat anchor or something, I don't know what, it's junk, it's, it's past its life, so, we'll be getting rid of that, we're gonna work with Travis to sell it to somebody, so. A couple meetings ago earlier in the year, I think it was the end of last year, actually, I told you guys that we got the fifty thousand dollar grant from State Fire Marshal for the new radios, and they just finally came in, so, forty-nine thousand dollars, bought us ten radios, so, that tells you how expensive they are, so, they're very expensive, so we got them in service. Staffing-wise, we're probably the best we've been in a really long time, we've got five brand-new young men and women, and I'm talking like nineteen years old, just out of school, they're coming along nicely, they're progressing, it's just, you know, I mean, it's just, this field isn't something you just allow, and there's just so many different aspects of it, so, they're coming along, I'm really happy with the progress, but, you know, we'll probably get them trained and all worked up, and they're already trained, but get them broke in, and then they'll go to the city and double their pay, probably. We gotta give them a chance, but our staffing is better now than it's been in a really long time, so, happy about that. This weekend, they're gonna seal coat half of the parking lot, you guys approved money to pave it last year, they're gonna seal coat half of it this weekend, and then about mid-week, we'll do the other half, and they'll come in and stripe it, just trying to take care of the new pavement. The new generator's in place and operational, finally, and I did wanna give a shout-out to Pleasant Township, because they picked up half the tad for that, it was seventy-eight thousand dollars and some change, and their reimbursement is forty thousand, so it's a little over half, so. Yeah, well, it's a hundred KBW, so we run the whole firehouse, Jerry's seen it, it's a nice, nice outfit, so, really happy about that, hopefully we don't have to depend on it, you know, hopefully we don't have a disaster where we have to depend on it, but if we do, it's there, so. We also got some security cameras in place for the property, a lot of times, you know, we go out on calls and leave the doors open and things like that, and it's just, we thought it was a good idea to put some cameras in place, so if somebody wanted to come in, at least we could keep an eye on it. Working with the high school, we're gonna do our splash party again this year, I talked to Travis Dotson, not Dotson, but-
Dotson?
No.
Oh, Mike Dotson.
Yeah, Mike Dotson, that's with the school, too many Mikes and Travis's, but, and so he's getting with the superintendent and getting it approved, so, I told him to give me a couple weeks' notice, so we can get a flyer generated, get the kids up there, and we'll do little drinks and little goody bags for them again, so. We added three more CPR instructors, so if anybody's watching this and you need or want CPR, you just give me a call, we can do it, any day, Monday through Friday, eight to four, we're up to like nine instructors now, so, if anybody needs it, it is a small cost, we don't make, we make, we're gonna be making a little bit of money off of it, because we have to raise our costs, because the American Heart Association raised their cost, and we need to start banking some money back to replace our mannequins, because every few years, the American Heart Association changes the program and demands all these things, and we're gonna have to upgrade our mannequins, and they're not choosing, so. But if you do need it, we're, we're in pretty good shape with instructors, so just give me a call. We did receive about twenty-four hundred dollars from a seatbelt grant that I applied for, so we'll be putting that towards some, some things, and then I also just applied a grant for two battery-operated positive pressure ventilation fans, those things are expensive, they're about six thousand apiece, so, all of them we have now are run off of just regular gas, and the problem with that is, when you get a fire, let's just say for instance, at the veterans' hall, and it's in the middle of the building, and you need to vent the smoke out, you're really, if you need a purpose for the gas-powered fan, because you fill the building for carbon dioxide. So right now, we're, we don't have, you know, the electric, or the battery-operated, so I wanna migrate that way, but there is a grant out there through the Work Miss Con, the Work Miss Con grant, so I'm gonna apply for that, keep my fingers crossed we get it and save us some money, so. Outside of that, that's about all I have.
Any questions for Chief Rocky? Are you still doing this meth detector program?
We don't have any right now, we need to get some more, but with this year's budgets, yeah, it'll probably be the first year before I can get some more, so, but we are completely out.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for Joey? Alright, thank you. Alright, and Sean, Chief, Enlo is not here tonight, Travis, I'll let you go ahead and continue on with the agenda.
Okay. So for utilities, electric crews have been continuing working on line clearing, tree trimming, Elm Court, they're working on some electric services there, doing some underground service repairs, and they'll be continuing work in the fairgrounds to make sure that their facility there is gonna be ready for the fair. Water and sewer, they're wrapping up lead and copper sampling, and I did wanna mention, you know, each year we have to take bottles around town for residents to assist with that lead and copper sampling, so, I just wanted to like give you a heads-up, we are going to give them twenty-dollar utility credit for helping us do that, so, it's not something I need your approval for, but I'd like you should know that we're not. And then they're gonna continue replacing some of the older large diameter meters, and then they have some annual containment monitoring, what they have to do for the TTHMs and AJA5s. Street, we've been busy working with the paving crew coming through town, the paving's going, going nicely, you know, we have a good crew here with Fillmore, they've been responsive, they've been, you know, good communication with us, good communication with residents as they've gone through town, we have had some hiccups, Kelly Terrace was really soft underneath when they stripped the old paving, so we had to do some changes there, there'll be a change, a work order change there to firm that up, we had to put some geotech down to, to firm that up, so that we could rebuild the roadway, but that was quite a mess when I got in there, so. They're also working through the park, the new pavement for the wider walker pads are pretty much down now, I know that they, they put in a long day yesterday, and they were gonna finish that up today. Now that the path is wider, there is a larger berm around that than what we expected, so they're gonna come back through and put a dirt berm around that to fix that, and then they'll, they'll ask for some additional seeding to get the grass in there, but they're gonna take care of the dirt. And then tennis courts, I'm working on Choice One to get that paving, or the resurfacing bid spec ready to go out to bid, I met with them last week, and they did point out that their, that big parking lot that comes down in front of the tennis courts, there's no catch basins in that, so we're gonna do a topographical survey to see if all that water's running across there, because that might be exacerbating the issue as well, so, we may have to run some catch basins along that grass strip between the parking lot and the tennis courts, if it looks like that's affecting it, so, we'll get that out to bid soon, and we'll have to discuss where to go from there. We'll get that out to bid soon and we'll have to discuss where to go from there once we get those bids. And I think that's all I have for now.
Any questions for Travis? All right, moving on. We will go to general business then, and some of this is a little bit changed up, so we'll start with the electric market update, we're actually going to move this to the next meeting, correct Travis?
Yes.
All right, and sidewalk discussion, that's going to the next meeting too as well, we have a couple things that we have to move along through executive session tonight, so those are probably going to take the bulk of our meeting, so we're going to save some of this discussion. We do have a couple ordinance that's on here for supplemental appropriation, we're certainly going to take a look at those, so in your packet, if you look at page two, there's an ordinance there, and Councilmember Campbell, when you get to that, if you could read it by title.
Sure. An ordinance making a supplemental appropriation through Village Georgetown, Brown County, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
All right, and Travis, correct me if I'm wrong here, but for the most part, as we move closer to the end of the year, there are some things that have to be moved around within the budget.
Yeah, we'll be doing this occasionally, a lot of this is to have enough to cover the paving, there's some in there for some of the funds that are short on like fire and EMS uniforms, some repairs. The fire and EMS equipment, that 4,400, that is a grant that we will get reimbursed for, so we'll get that back, but we still have to appropriate. Let's see, the water principal and the sewer principal in interest, that's for the loan to cover the new wall that we built there, so that covers that. That sewer capital outlet, that $28,000, we had, while Fillmore was in town, we had them chip and seal the drive back to the sewer plant, so that's what that is. And then the big one on there, electric land improvements, even though our guys have got a lot of the line clearing tree work, we are going to do a contract for some, for a large section, Jerry can speak on that since he's here, but that's what that's for.
And you, you back Jerry? Yes?
Yeah, that's mainly for the CIP, to get ready for the first phase of the CIP, we're going to be building new lines to connect our circuits, so we'll have some redundancy build into our system, to harden our system on the distribution side, and the, that's the bulk of that, that's what that is. So, that's tree removals, the biggest section of it's about 90-plus thousand dollars, or $80,000, and it's going to be right there beside the cemetery, the tree side of the street there, we're going to go back 20 feet and then completely level it, so there's going to be a new feeder line coming down through there, two feet back toward the school, so Haemer Road will be connected to Mount Leopipe. And then there's some trees on Haemer as well that need to be removed, some on Lake view Acres, and that's tree stump grinding and all, so it'll be, you know, customers won't have any issues with stumps left in their yards. But, yeah, that's mainly to get our CIP in a built place where we can get it started when we do get the approved funds for that.
Any questions? All right, so back to the ordinance on page two, Councilmember Campbell, Campbell did read that, so when ready, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Bucky has made a motion to approve the ordinance, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Seconded by Councilmember Campbell, Tara, roll call.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bucky?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Items D and E, we will come back to after roundtable, and then property maintenance code, Travis?
Yeah, what was it, no?
1398, 1398.
You're good.
1398, thank you guys. Travis, property maintenance code?
Yeah, there's one section that Joe and I are still finishing up, so we'll get that out here soon and then we'll have time to review and discuss.
So, we are still working.
We, I just want to clarify that part about the interior, I think people were confused with that was across the board, really that the intent of that, dealing with interior measurements and stuff, if somebody converts like a house into a boarding home or a multifamily, we want to make sure that when it's divided up, it's done with those specifications, so that's the only time out coming in play, so we just want to clarify that. It's the only thing we're working on, yeah.
But as a whole, you're still working on modifying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And then once you have it where you feel like it's ready to bring to council, everybody will have a copy prior to council so that you can read through it and be well-educated on it and then come to council to discuss edits, ideas, whatever we would like to discuss.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll come back to D and E. F, nothing to vote on or discuss there tonight, anything further? And then item E, the planning commission vacant position, if anybody goes, if somebody that's interested in a position on the planning commission, please reach out to me and we will get that filled over, hopefully by the next meeting, so hopefully while that position is filled. All right, let's go on to your items from staff and just go report on page seven, take a look at that. If there are any questions, as we go through these, please don't hesitate to ask. Let's see, go continue on, page nine is going to be your payment listing, again, any questions, don't hesitate to ask there. And, looks like they provided us an update on the appropriations and kind of current year status as well. And then that takes you all the way back to page 54, which is your mayor's court report. And last time I checked, we were doing pretty good with the mayor's court, seems like it's been pretty busy lately. And as well, your zoning report is on page 56, very last page. Again, any questions on that, don't hesitate to ask, even after the meeting, you can reach out to Travis, you can reach out and ask any questions and he'll certainly help you get those answered. All right, let's move along to roundtable, and I'm going to start to my left, Councilmember Ray, anything for the Gert tonight?
I just went across Judy Ruthman Way yesterday and there's a huge pile over there. And then there's some trees on the left side that need to be trimmed back over there.
I see Travis making note of that, so some of the, if there are potholes, I know Travis is working on the plan for paving, some of those fall into that where things are getting paved here momentarily, but if there is something, just certainly let him know at any point in time. All right, anything else?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Just real quick to touch on with the gentleman from Abcap, can you remember his name?
Yeah.
To give everybody in here and then people listening an idea, there's 105 streets in the village. There's 30 streets have sidewalks on them, 19 have sidewalks on both sides, 11 have sidewalks either on one side or partial, so any help anybody wants to get, there's a lot of, a lot of streets and a lot of area to cut, so any help would be appreciated, that's all I have.
All right, Councilmember Pringle?
Yep.
Farmers market's coming up?
That it is, in two weeks.
In two weeks, on August 28th, right?
Correct.
Are you still looking for vendors?
Yeah.
So they can reach out to you, right?
They may, yes.
All right, let's see, Councilmember Bucky?
Just one thing, the Eagles, everybody knows in Georgetown is very supportive of the village and things we do, they're having basically an open house all weekend, Saturday evening they're having a, everything's free to the public, a band out in their pavilion and it starts at 7:00, and then on Sunday, they're having a classic car show, registrations from 9:00 to noon, they're presenting awards at 3:30, there'll be food available up there, raffles, music, things like that. I'll probably give us a Terry to put on the website, I think they had almost 100 cars there last year, so it's, everything's free to the community if you're looking for something to do this weekend, that's all I have.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilmember Mays?
Yeah, I'd like to, well, first of all, I think it's a great idea, Abcap looking to do something with the sidewalks, trying to work in grants, and I do think there's an extreme amount of sidewalks in our town that still need to be addressed in the meanwhile, and it's been a long time since we've raised the amount that we fund for sidewalks, so what I'd like to do is see if we can make a motion to modify the current sidewalk ordinance for $1,000 to move the, raise it to 1,500, and also currently, from what I understood from the last meeting, we, at the end of the year, instead of allocating that money that is left over from year to year, we always put it back into general fund and then reload the following year. What I'd like to see is if we could also modify that and start putting that money in like an IRA or CD, maybe a 10-year or something, whatever Travis would recommend.
So, let me correct you, because I was wrong, I checked Greg on that, it's not general fund, it stays in the street fund.
So, it stays in the street fund. Is there a different fund for street funds opposed to sidewalk?
Well, no, it's all part of 2011, which is our street fund, so. So, it stays in the street fund and, you know, it's not like it's going back into general fund again.
Well, can we earmark that money from year to year in the future so that it goes directly for future projects of sidewalks? Because I know that, you know, at my home, I have to save back so much to build for something in the future and it really is no different in the small town of Georgetown, if we put that money into something that will grow and use it specifically for that, then whenever, say if we get these grants, maybe there's a little bit of money there to help pay the offset of if we had to match, for example. But at least that money would be earmarked, that's earmarked currently for sidewalks, will stay for that and it won't get pulled for something with the road in the future.
Yeah, we could create a sub-fund in 2011 that would be for sidewalks, and that, all that, for all things, everything over.
So, is that something to make a motion to?
Why don't we do this, why don't we draft something so the future councils will see it, since that's going to be a continuing obligation and then it'll be reported and we can draft that for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Is that the amount you want to rate it, Travis?
I think...
1,000?
Let me look at that, I've got that.
What we could do is we can raise that if that's what you want to do.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like for it to do that, but I'd also like to put more in there yearly also for the simple fact of if you're going to increase it by 500 max, you know, or rather it'd be 1,500 max.
Run out to the maximum.
Right, so if we could increase it to 1,500, there'd be, I feel like there'd be a lot more people jump on board with repairing their sidewalks. When that ordinance was wrote was how long ago? Do you have that?
2013.
So, it's been significantly long enough to where I know that concrete's went up probably at least $50 a yard since then, so.
Let me, let me interrupt real quick, so there was one in 2021 that wasn't passed, and I found it, they were talking a, let's see, a max of $5,000.
And I think there's, there, those bills can run up that high, I think that it maybe be put a, you know, in certain case scenarios, like when we talked last meeting, there could be some houses with sidewalks, they're on a corner lot, for example, and you would need that increased flexibility, so to speak, in a scenario like that.
There, that is in part of the description, it'll, it says stuff about curb work and corner locks and sidewalks too.
Right.
It's in that, it's in the whole ordinance handling, that's what, when you guys, I'll show you this afterwards, you guys can kind of get off it, I think it, it was just an idea which way.
But that was only up to a, that one's up to 5,000.
This one that they, yes, it's dated for 2021, but it, I have where it says that it's not that.
Right.
Yeah, we can, Joe and I will work on something for the next meeting.
Okay.
Councilmember Mays, anything additional?
Uh, no, no, yeah.
Councilmember Jones?
Uh, did we, did we make a list or get a list from Rumpy on the acceptable and not-acceptable items that people can put in their draft?
Yes, I have that, I need to get that, we'll get that up next week. And I need to talk to Cassandra, we can, we can add that to the bill so it goes out with the bill, so that everybody gets it.
Okay, and then with the power orders that we had, well, that was scheduled this week, if no one has one call or Facebook, how, how do they know how they're going to be affected? Can we figure out a way to maybe, if we're going to do a, if we know in advance that maybe we can, I don't know?
So, we are working on, we are working on a new system that will allow us to notify everyone who's involved, whether they've signed up for something or not, when there's an emergency like that, so that, that's coming.
And then I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, the light on the corner of John Looney Way and North Main, to remove the...
You're talking about the traffic signal?
The traffic light and put stop signs on John Looney Way and what is that, East North?
So, you're, it would be a two-way style?
Yeah.
So, North Main will be through traffic?
Correct, yeah.
Have we done any studies on that?
Not that I'm aware of, have we?
Yes, it's been several years that we did do a traffic study, we had traffic studies in all the intersections to see which ones were warranted and which ones weren't. That one was one, it wasn't warranted. The one at actual, the intersection of Grant Main was not warranted, but because of the way it was offset, it was suggested to leave it. Do you want at Sableup, it wasn't warranted, or IGA wasn't warranted, we already take, we had taken it down because you guys agreed to take that down. So, yes, there has been a traffic study, but it's just been probably five or six years now.
That's interesting, so Councilmember...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
So, that'll be just, that'll be through traffic through the light on Main, you're saying, right, so it won't stop there?
There won't be stop signs on Main, there should be stop signs on Side Street there.
Councilmember Jones has made a motion, if there is a second.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Mays, further discussion?
I mean, timeframe-wise, if we wanted to do an updated study on that, if it's been six or seven years, I mean, how long are we looking to do something like that, to get one of those done?
Who did that study, do you know?
It was Structure Point, pretty sure.
Structure Point did it?
Yeah.
I can check with them, we can see.
Because I know it wouldn't necessarily be a pace to ask, like another ramifications of it, if it's been six or seven years. It was about four years ago.
Yeah, I think, I was, I was, I don't even think it's been that long because I, I was sitting on the council when they done that.
It was, it was around the same time we were working on the CIP.
So, it was on Parkland.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess it hasn't been that long, really. I would say the traffic hasn't changed dramatically in four years.
Or maybe even allow table that, potentially until next week to let people public comment on it here and there, just, I mean, since if we're going to take a light out just to maybe let people have a voice, someone contact us or come to a meeting and say one way or the other, that would be my only thing, I'm not phasing giving it, I just want to make sure that we're listening to the people, you know.
I'm not opposed to it either, I'd just like to drive back through there again to make sure that there's plenty of vision on both sides that somebody can't pull out or wouldn't pull out there and be T-boned.
So, we have a motion, a second, how do you table that?
If there's a motion to table, it takes precedence, so are you making a motion to table? I would make a motion to table that until the next second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ray, okay, then what?
You don't have discussion on a motion to table, so you just vote, and if not, we go back to the next one.
Okay, terrible call, motion to table. We do that music, the gentleman music, right?
I definitely like that.
All right, Terry, roll call. Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bucky?
Yes.
All right, so the motion passes to table the subject to the next meeting, so.
Can I ask a question about?
Yes.
When we took the one out by IGA because it's private property, you don't...
When we took the one out by IGA, because it's private property, you don't have to stop in a parking lot, but being how you would have to stop here, would you put stop signs on both sides, like just to give them an extra, like an extra visual that?
Yeah, the side streets would have stop signs, absolutely, yeah.
But I mean, would, I mean, would you, yeah, would you put one, like we do that a lot, for when we eliminate intersection stuff, we'll put a stop sign on both sides. That way it's, especially when it's this new, to give somebody a heads up.
You'd probably want to put it on flashing red for a lot.
So there would be four, four stop signs instead of two.
Yeah, but the flashing would kind of take that in there as well. Because we used to be able to stack it, and then now we just kind of put one on each side to give it a lot more visual.
Yeah, I don't think we just want to take that one down, I think we're going to have a process there.
Right.
Sorry, I.
Can I make a comment here?
Yes.
They, they, when they take an intersection out, it's, it's not just take it out. They, they put it on flash like Travis is saying, and then there's signs posted saying that this traffic signal will be eliminated by such and such date.
The light itself's on flash?
Yeah, the actual, the lights that's there now will be on flashing red.
Okay.
Will be flashing red on the side streets, but on Main Street, it would be flashing yellow.
So would they just remake that motion next round or would we have to have legislation?
We'll go ahead and draft it, just.
So does the light still stay? Will the light?
During that transition period.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Jones, four still yours.
Uh, that's all done.
All right, thank you. All right, Travis, anything additional?
No.
Joe, anything for the group? All right, so we did skip over a couple of things that we needed to address first in executive session, so we do need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to higher revised code, section one twenty-one point two-two G two, to consider the sale property and G eight, to consider negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance that involves public infrastructure improvements.
Councilmember Bucky has properly made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Mays, Tara, roll call.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bucky?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to go into executive sess- session. We're going to stay in the room, which means Delbert, tonight, you're not going to be able to sit in here, you're going to have to take a seat in the hall.
Do you have a warm-up, Ben?